Okay, good evening everyone. It is 7:04 and I hereby call to order the November 2018 meeting of the Village Actively Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We begin with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes. In the clerk's office, three payrolls were processed. Trash tags, there were 672 that were sold. As a reminder, the clerk's office will be closed tomorrow and Friday in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And I had the wonderful pleasure to present along with trustee Murphy at the memorial ceremonies, remembering our veterans on November 11th at 11:00 a.m. with the American Legion gentleman Harris Smith, post number 524. Wonderful. They always commemorate our veterans in such a special way. And recently, I saw firsthand our Tivoli Fire Company at work. Incredible. They are incredible. And for me, it's an honor to be part of that department. It truly is. So with the holiday coming up, on behalf of Treasurer Day and Laura Gail Tyler, our deputy clerk, and myself, we wish everyone very happy Thanksgiving. Safe travels for those who are going out of town.
Thank you Clerk Bruno. It's a good time for me to say that there has been a change of personnel here at the village. Kristin Cleveland, who has had the position of deputy clerk for the last couple of years, has moved on. We wish her well and thank her very much for her service. And of course, her grandmother was involved in the village as well. That's Catherine Lane over there is named after her grandmother. And we'd like to welcome her successor, our new deputy clerk, Laura Gail Tyler, who many of you will know for her many years of service as the extremely competent chair of our zoning board of appeals. So she started about a week ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, two.
Yeah. So welcome to Laura Gail and thank you to her for joining the team, Team Tivoli. Okay, trustees, next we have several sets of minutes. We have a correction of the title of the September 12 minutes. So that was, let's see, was that a special meeting that we had?
It was a workshop and I had put special.
Right, yes. Okay, so we took some actions at a regular workshop, which had been labeled as a special meeting, so we're just making that correction. That was September 12th. And then we have regular board meeting October 17th. So two sets, almost two sets of minutes. One new set and one old set with a new name.
Yeah, we've had.
Good evening, Robert. You've had a chance to review those. Trustees, is there a motion to make that change to September 12th and adopt or accept the October 17th?
So move.
Okay. It's gonna be one of those nights, yes. We are down to trustees, so. Yes, trustees, Ezraati and Schneider are already on their travels for Thanksgiving. So thank you for being here, so we can do business. Treasurer's report. We thank Treasurer Day for her excellent work. This month out of the general fund, we spent $48,246.48. Out of the water fund, $23,574.88. Out of the sewer fund, $12,072.77. And out of the expendable trust, $171 for a grand total of $84,065.13. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, bills will be paid. Would anyone enjoy reading the zoning report since trustee Ezraati is not here?
Oh, sure.
All right, that's, got it?
Yes. So, code enforcement officer John Fenton has submitted the report this month. There were no building permits. Five building inspections were performed. Three zoning violations. Four failure to remove garbage cans from the sidewalk. That's it, no municipal searches or fire inspections.
Don't forget, there were zero complaints.
Oh, sorry. And there were zero complaints.
Not sure what that means, but we'll take it.
Cross the fingers.
Okay. Thank you. Emily? All right, so normally, this is when we would open the floor to public comment on agenda items only, so that the board can hear from the public before they do any voting. But I know the two members of the public that are here, and they're actually our first agenda items, so I'd like to welcome Robert George and Jennifer Ryan from Greater Good Dynamics. I know you have a little presentation for the board and for the residents of Tivoli. So if you'd like to stand up and tell us, tell the camera. Sorry, we don't have anybody. You can tell it all to Robin if you like.
Yeah, that'd be somebody to tell us. You guys already know about it.
Right.
It's okay.
A remarkable number of people actually.
Oh, here we go, just on time. Hello Pete.
Hi.
Sorry, I was cooking at home. It's public Pete. All right, so.
So now you can tell Pete.
Well, what's going on?
Pete doesn't know?
We have a presentation, Pete, if you don't mind. Just do.
No pressure, we're just a public.
You mind standing up here?
Sure.
We have the floor. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Can I approach the?
You may approach the question.
Can I take this here?
Sure.
Yes. Okay. The word presentation makes me a little nervous. I don't know if we can zoom.
We're not gonna like that for you.
Can we zoom on?
Presents, sir.
On the camera? Jennifer, can you hold this up to the camera?
Yes, I can.
Okay. As you know, our nonprofit, Greater Good Dynamics, has conceptualized an ice skating rink for the village of Tivoli. And we wanted to thank you all for working with us and partnering with us. And so the skating rink would be over in Memorial Park. The skating surface will be, you know, skatable only when it's cold. It's a very simple pop-up skating rink. You can go to our website, www.ggdynamics.org, to find out more. And we hope to have the skating rink constructed and up within two or three weeks. We will keep you posted. If you'd like to volunteer, most importantly, we need volunteers to help. Please contact us through our website and we'll tell you how we can put you to work, putting together the community ice skating rink for Tivoli. Any questions?
It's gonna be cold enough tomorrow.
How big is it?
It's 72 by 85 feet. And then the water will be somewhere around 10 inches deep. So if it was liquid, there's no danger of anyone falling through the ice and getting hurt. We're grabbing. Yes?
Where is it gonna be, in that depression, in that, you know, that?
Yeah, right between the water tower, north of the half-pipe, west of the garden.
Yeah.
And that, in the hollow.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're very excited about it. You know, we thank you for thinking of Tivoli with this great idea. You know, I think the buzz among residents is that this will be a wonderful thing to enjoy this winter. And you know, the idea of the kit is that this can pop up and down every winter, right? So.
Yeah, that's what's terrific about it. It's not a big expense to put this together. And then everything is reusable, with the exception of the liner. So it's a minimal expense for future years. And we expect this to hold up to wear and tear. So as long as we have winter.
So is the liner usable more than one season?
No, liner is disposable. It's only one season.
And what is that, like a thin plaid?
It's very thin vinyl, like a swimming pool liner. So it's not a big expense to purchase a new one every year.
And could you give the website again, please, so that people can see the nice graphic just in case it doesn't show up so well?
Sure. It's ggdynamics.org. GGdynamics.org. We're located in Red Hook. And check out our website and contact us or see us on Facebook.
Is there a spot else where to donate on your website for the project?
Oh, there is, yeah. You can volunteer in terms of donating. But I don't think we're here to use that time to talk about donating. But you brought it up.
I did.
Sweat, getting sweat.
But we can use help, you know, from carpenters. Anyone who's interested in helping, just contact us.
Do you want to plan on starting?
Two or three weeks?
Probably two or three weeks for installation. We've received some donations already, enough to buy, to purchase the main components of the rink. So we're already off and running. And then we also have approval from you, so the main ingredients are in place. We just need a little bit more help to push us to the finish line.
And we also work on the 32 degrees together.
Yeah, at least, right?
At least, yeah. Well, you know, we hope it all comes together. We're off to a great start and we look forward to working with you. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. We could leave some of these here in the village hall. And you could remind people they can pick them up. Information sheets.
Sure.
Great, thank you very much, everyone.
This is gonna be great.
Yeah, we're really, really happy and really excited. You know, if we had it up now.
We'd be skating off this stuff in tomorrow afternoon.
Well, you could skate all weekend. I think it's gonna be really, really cold. So we're gonna leave these here for you to give out to residents. I could pass that to you.
All right.
I'll be, thank you very, very much.
I think the only thing, the only news and announcement that could possibly top the pop-up skating rink coming to Tivoli is that Tivoli has just been successful in some large grants for the water and sewer projects that are at hand. And I know that a lot of this has already been out there, but since last Saturday, I believe. But here's what happened. So we've only spent the last four years or so trying to tackle our water and sewer infrastructure needs. Brief history is, we did a grant in 2014 to do a study. We got that grant, we did that study. They looked at every detail of the water and sewer systems and we got a project cost. Parallel to that, the village has been looking at transferring the systems from the municipality of Tivoli to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. While these two tracks were happening, we had a large public conversation about the necessity for our next water tank. So we have been working on many parallel tracks. And with all that going on, we also took those numbers. So the project cost for water, that's the water tower, water mains, well upgrades, total project cost is $4,733,000. The number for the sewer upgrades is $3,676,000. So we applied to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, who administers the Water Improvement Infrastructure Act, which includes not just water, but also wastewater. That agency will fund up to 60% of your water needs and 25% of your sewer needs. And Tivoli was successful in getting the full 60% for water and 25% for sewer. So that works out to $2,839,968 towards our water project and $919,150 towards our sewer project. So I think that this week stands out in probably the last three or four decades in Tivoli as we've all said, oh boy, another water main break. Thank goodness for Jimmy Simmons and the DPW. But not sort of much beyond that. I do want to thank trustees of the last, you know, 10 years and also my predecessor Brian Coranna, who applied for that first grant to do the study and got this ball rolling. I mean, this is obviously such a large thing. This spans several administrations. But needless to say, we are thrilled. We have a way forward. The transfer is going to happen. We've settled on what we believe is the best water storage tank for the community. And when we, as these things are transferred to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, they are going to have these grants to do all those capital improvements. You know, the way to think of it is, the system belongs to the users, all of us who pay water and sewer rents. And whether it's administered by the village or administered by the water authority, this grant money, you know, goes to the users of these systems. And so that's really gonna help us keep those bills down. You know, we had projections, I think a lot of people have heard that sewer bills or water sewer rents are gonna double. So that projection that came out of that original study was based on not winning any grant money and having to take a zero interest, or I think it's actually a 2% interest loan in that model. So if the village won no grants and had to go to New York State for a low-interest 2% loan, the projections were that rates would double, under either village ownership or authority ownership, because the pipes and the tank and all that stuff, it's the same jobs that need to get done, regardless of who's doing them. So now with these grants, that projection, it's not gonna be double. I'm not sure exactly where it's gonna fall, but it's gonna fall on the lower side of double, so that's a good thing. So congratulations, Tivoli, and you know, thanks to the board for all the work. And a special thank you to Ty &amp; Bond, who's been our engineering firm, who's been with us on this whole journey. And Erin Moore. Brandy, missing her last name here, excuse me. Brandy Nelson.
There you go.
And Dan Valentine also. So everyone at Ty &amp; Bond, you know, you've helped us do this and we're really grateful for that. So. Next, we're gonna be less exciting and do some budget modifications.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Would the water infrastructure work have any effect on the artwork behind you? I mean, will they, how would that tie in?
Do we have to do the village deal?
Yeah.
Well, the, you know, the village looked at a number of different kinds of water tanks, like a ground-mounted electric pump one, sort of a cement pillar, not attractive, cheaper. And then also another multi-leg elevated witches hat. And that's what the community settled on. So it is gonna be located not in the park. It's gonna be located up at the McKnight Well Field, which is on Broadway across from Clay Hill Road, on another municipal water plot or parcel. And interestingly, you know, they built that one first and then they decommissioned the other one. So at some point, we'll have two towers until they take the old one down, so.
It's gonna look like World of the Worlds.
We're not gonna encourage any Ty road blocking, okay?
Not to discourage either, though.
So, yeah, that's, you know, we went most similar. And there are, actually, on the third floor, we still have up our, we had some Photoshop renderings done by Ty &amp; Bond to show what the different tanks would look like in situ. And you know, the other one, the color scheme is gonna be the same. It's much fatter. It's actually 300,000 gallons instead of 150,000. So the proportions are a little different. The height is exactly the same. And I have a blue hat and blue underpants. I'd say Tivoli on it, so it'll be, yeah.
Graffiti optional.
Yeah, graffiti discouraged, but you know, it's rarely left up to us, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, budget modifications. Trustees, we went over this in the workshop. Is there a motion to adopt these budget mods?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Budget mods were adopted. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. We have a resolution establishing Election Day for the village of Tivoli. We have, well, first of all, Election Day this year will be on March 19th, 2019, next March. The election will be held at the Tivoli Firehouse between the hours of noon and 9:00 p.m. And voters will choose for one mayor and two trustees. Each of those terms is a two-year term. So I'm up.
I am.
Trustee Murphy's up. And trustee Ezraati.
Ezraati, please.
Yep, so, March 19th. And we're, I wanna thank the clerk for doing all these clerical deadlines on time with the board of elections and whatnot.
Thank you.
Motion to establish Election Day for March 19th, 2019.
I move.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
An attendant resolution appointing election inspectors for the March 19th election. This would be to appoint Judy Scott and Cindy Hakunda. And as our alternate, Jackie Zaka?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you to the three of them for offering and being willing to do it. I'm not sure if they offered, if they were recruited, but we thanked them.
They were thrilled to be recruited.
Yeah. Excellent. Motion to adopt this resolution appointing election inspectors for the March 19th elections.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, every year we have to shop around for our fuel needs. That's number two, fuel, oil, propane, and diesel. And I wanna thank Clerk Bruno for taking on this task this year. And I believe we're doing state bid on each of these, is that correct? Yep, so trustees, you'll see clerk's narratives there about who has the state bid for each of these varieties of fuel. And with that said, is there a motion to accept these fuel prices for this 2018-2019 winter season?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you Clerk Bruno.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to approve the 2019 holiday schedule. This is New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans Day, two days for Thanksgiving, the Thursday and the Friday, and Christmas. Is there a motion to adopt these, this 2019 holiday schedule?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, we have, I don't know, maybe we should've done the ice rink and the water grants at the end. It's like a lot of, it's kinda anticlimactic doing this housekeeping stuff after where it's at.
It gets more and more boring as the winters progress.
My sense of showmanship is off this month here. All right. This is a motion to return the tax roll to Dutchess County. These are unpaid taxes that Dutchess County collects on behalf of the village.
Right.
We will send them the list. Is there a motion to return this tax roll to DC?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's our regular business. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 19th at 7:00 p.m., preceded by a workshop at 6:00 p.m. here at the historic Watztepeister Hall. And we have a regular workshop on December 12th at 7:00 p.m. Our 19th meeting is held here and the workshop that evening and the regular workshop are generally held in the mayor's office unless we have a lot of people attending and then we move to a larger room. We rarely get public at those meetings, although they are public. We did have the gentleman with us last week. So, you know, if you're ever not doing much on a Wednesday evening, come to a board workshop. You'll literally get, you know, three to five of us.
Out of us.
You have your undefided detention, yeah, so.
You forgot the water report.
We didn't get to it yet.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
I know you wanna have people guess the rainfall. We're getting there.
I've been looking forward to this all month.
Yes. In the absence of trustee Ezraati, trustee Murphy, would you please read the report?
Yes, I will.
We were so close.
There shall be no betting on the water amount last month. Actually, I wasn't able to get it together, so make your prediction for last month rainfall. And I'm sure Susan will look it up next month.
I'm gonna say like 5 and 3/4 inches.
I'll say 4 inches. And is it on there?
Say 5.2. Is it on here?
Sometimes it's on there.
Yeah. So it looks like the ballot was off and not working. McKnight, number one, was pumping 307,000 gallons. Potts West 2 was 170,000 gallons. Potts West 5 was 21,000 gallons. Potts West 4 and 10, they went together, 429,000 gallons. The Woodmark Wells have pumped 769,000 gallons. And this is a total sheet and it looks like the average water tower height was around 66, 67 feet, ending on Halloween with 168 feet. And water system operation report, microbiological sample results for October. There were no violations. Which is great. And there was also, there was an emergency occurred on the water system.
Yeah, sometimes on the back.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's where it takes the samples.
Sampling location on North Road and sampling location on Spring Street.
So, and that's where the good stuff is.
Oh, okay. New pitless adapter and new 1 1/2 horsepower pump and motor installed in well.
Four pots.
Four pots on the 24th of October.
Yes, we did have a pump fail at the Four Pots well and purchased a new one and got that installed, so.
And on just the record, 5.2 inches.
I think you might've missed that information.
All right, let's see here. Next, we have Justice Court Report, which I will read. Let's see. Do we actually have a Justice Court Report? I've got the police report, but not the court report. Anyone have any?
No, it's the court report, it just doesn't have the summary like it normally does.
Yeah, it's no summary, I guess that's what I mean. No, that I've got. You know the summary when it says taxes remitted or fines remitted.
It's on the end, the second page, it's on the bottom.
It's not what I'm looking for, but.
Not there?
No, sorry. I did wanna talk about some of the items in the court report. So we had a number of cases that I wanna point out. So we had 1, 2, 3, 4. Four unreasonable noise violations and three convictions. Okay, one of those was dismissed. Three of them were convicted and those fines were 250 each. There's a 150, there's 250. We also had, and I believe this is about the first time since the law was passed in 2015, we had five nuisance gathering convictions. I'm pretty sure these nuisance gatherings all occurred in September. That's what we have here, early September. So these are gatherings that are generally happening after 10 o'clock, violating the noise ordinance or other village ordinances. And we have five convictions on that. And each of those carries a fine of 250. Now, the fines barely make a dent in what it costs Tivoli taxpayers to hire patrols, police patrols. This is not about generating revenue for the village coffers. It doesn't even make a dent in it. But what I do wanna point out to residents is that we enforce our noise law, we enforce our nuisance gathering law, and that we're seeing convictions. And the, you know, we're very serious about these quality of life laws that we've passed. And you know, the consequences are real. We want everyone to know about the existence of these laws and to, you know, respect our neighbors, be thoughtful, be conscious, and avoid, you know, incidents and actions which would result in these kinds of tickets and these kinds of fines, because they will happen. And one other piece of a nuisance gathering conviction which has not happened yet is that if you're a property owner and your tenants get one and they move out and the next tenants get one, well, the third one in a three-year period can go to the landlord themselves. So we will be writing the landlords of these five properties, informing them that there was one convicted violation at their property. And that, in a sense, is, you know, strike one that starts a two-year clock ticking. If there's two more in the same two-year window, that third one goes straight to the property owner. So the idea of that mechanic is that, you know, landlords pay attention, get involved, supervise their properties, and take responsibility for the, you know, the actions of their tenants, so. Any other comments on that police report? That's what I got. We got, you know, speeding. any other comments on that police report? That's what I got. We got, you know, speeding, stop signs. And I will just add that winter snow ordinance is in effect now. So no parking on any village street 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Yes, some pizza, Joe?
Yeah, I've heard a lot of it before. It's over time. And I'm glad to see some convictions and some fines kind of finally getting, getting some teeth to the law, I guess, so to speak.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of us crammed into a pretty small area, right? So I don't think we just gotta be cool.
Be cool.
That's all. That's all, yeah.
Well said. All right, let's see. Trustee Murphy? Anything further in your wheelhouse?
Really, but I mean, it was nice to go to the Veterans Day event that the American Legion put on. It was funny, because I was at work. I had a downtime and I was like, you know what, I wanna go. And it was nice to see, but it was kinda sad that there weren't more people there. It would be nice to show that appreciation of our veterans that came back. So
So the next event like that they do is Memorial Day in May. And they do it, do it every year. And incidentally, 2019 is the centennial of the Harris Smith American Legion post. So stay tuned for more recognition of our fine American Legion here in Tivoli. Deputy Mayor Major.
Okay, there's a lot going on. I'm gonna keep it brief. So up at, so Clermont State Historic Site has this, I'm sorry, December 1st and 2nd. It's a program called Child's Christmas and basically bring your kids by for stories and, you know, Christmas-type stories and treats. Ages three to 10, December 1st and 2nd, 10 to 12. All, and there's a $4 charge per person on that. But Saturday, December 15th is Clermont's open house, which is free. And go and check out the house. And it's 11 to 4. Super festive. This Saturday, I'm sorry, this Friday, your kids will be off from school. You'll be looking for something to do with them, I'm sure. And up at Olana, the Pumpernickel puppets are doing two productions having to do with Peter Rabbit. And lest you think that the Pumpernickel puppets are some fly-by-night, you know, puppetry troupe.
They're not.
They're not. No, they are award-winning, longtime respected puppeteers. And they specialize in folk and fairy tale performances. So that's at Olana this Friday at both 10 and 11:30.
Friday or Saturday?
Friday.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Let's see, Historic Red Hook has Dutch Christmas on December 8th, but, and that'll be great. Don't miss it. But where you should really be on December 8th is here for Winterfest. It's gonna be super fantastic as always. We've got Santa, we've got a horse and wagon, we've got
Tree lighting.
Tree lighting, crafts for kids. We've got carolers and the village and the library and Murray's and Historic Red Hook have teamed up again to get theater on the road to do a performance of a Christmas carol. The classic tale, the outshot of which is "Don't Be a Jerk." So please come to that December 8th. And we have space for craft vendors as well. So contact me if you're interested in doing that. The library has a couple of cool workshops coming up. Saturday, December 1st from 11:30 to 1:30. Michelle will be showing you how to how to turn your unwanted books, as if there could be such a thing, into wreaths. So festive. And there are $5 Cotspahn tickets for the December 1st performance of the Buglezi Dance Theater. And on Wednesday, December 5th, there's a fundraiser for the library that's gonna be at Murray's, upstairs at Murray's from 6 to 8 with novelist and New Yorker writer Susan Orlean. So
It's actually, Tivoli libraries changed from using that as their fundraiser. And all the proceeds will go to the Pleasant Valley Library, because it burnt down past month. So
I did not see that. All right, well, even better. And as far as nature goes, do not step outside your home if you're not wearing orange. That's it.
Thank you. And on that generous program from, from our friends at Cotspahn, where Tivoli residents can go to the library and make a $5 donation and get their ticket, it is only for Tivoli residents. And we're on to you. It's not gonna happen again.
Oh.
It's a good idea that
So if, you know, you wanna bring your water bill or electric bill or to the library, might not be a bad idea, because unfortunately, some people did take advantage of that. And I know that they were not Tivoli residents. The library knows, Cotspahn knows. Shame on you. All right. You know, that program is about, you know, bringing Cotspahn and the residents in Tivoli closer together, you know, which is a really important effort underway. And it's really just for this community. So please respect that. Thank you. Well, I've got three great projects, neither of which are quite finished and have all run into different snags, but I'll tell you anyway. So from, I guess, smallest to largest, we've been trying to put a new water fountain downstairs in this building. And it has taken several months.
Didn't it go back?
First, it arrived smashed up. We sent it back. Then they sort of haggled with their replacement, but we got them to send us a new unit. And then we started installing this unit and ran into some sort of physical complications fitting it into the spot. We've got an old electrical box that needs to be upgraded. So it's sort of half-installed. And the Wastepeister Hall Historic Hydration Station, we hope will be ready for operation on Monday. But it's almost there. So thank you for your patience and let no one in this building ever be thirsty again, you know? Next one up there, you may have seen our ADA compliant ramp at the firehouse. The cement's been poured. It looks very nice. And we're still waiting on the rails. So, you know, we're hoping to have that ready for November 6th for the election. Was just not quite ready, unfortunately. But the rails, the specs have been approved by our engineer that they're ADA compliant and they should be installed, I believe, in time for Winterfest.
Sweet.
So there's that. And then a larger and more frustrating one than either of those two is the Broadway water line replacement. So as you've been hearing for a couple of months, we were trying to get these two water lines done before winter. We had a premature snowfall, one thing. Also, there was, you know, so we dug up over here in front of Faroe Avenue and we were replacing a valve, or we were adding a valve and replacing a pipe. Well, we did that. And this valve over here decided that it also wanted to be replaced and broke and failed the pressure test when this got reassembled. So the obvious thing to do while you're in the ground, the road dug up, is replace that valve as well. We lost time on that. And the asphalt plant's closed today, I believe. So we had to do a temporary buttoning up. So because Broadway is actually cement underneath the asphalt. The original requirement by the county, it being their road, is that we pour the cement and then put the asphalt on top. We weren't able to do that in time. So it's backfilled. It's gotten an asphalt skin on it. But the bad news that is very frustrating for me and will be for you all in the spring is that we're gonna cut it open one more time, pour the cement, and pave it for good. So right now, we have sort of a temporary asphalt paving there. If you're wondering why we didn't do the very first few feet of Faroe Avenue, it's because it's really gonna get done in the spring. And the one at St. Sylvia's over here, we didn't even get to. So very frustrating. We did our best. And some more disruption we can afford to in the spring. But things are what they are, unfortunately. So
They're traffic calming devices. Let's just look at them like that. Lemonade, Joel.
Okay. We did smooth that one traffic calming device down on the end of Montgomery Street. That little patch got paved. So for all those residents, smoother, but slow driving. At this time, we'd like to invite the public for any public comment.
Any prognosis on North? I know it's a town of Red Hook thing, but maybe you guys know.
Yes. I haven't heard any updates from what I heard when it first happened. That, you know, that culvert started cracking, the road bed was giving way, it was closed. And we're talking about just at the top of North Road where it forks into Sangstack and Stony Brook. Just on the Stony Brook there, there's a small creek named
The Maston Brook.
Yes, it has a name.
Some tributary of our way clay going.
That's where this is. And it happens to be just over the village line into the town of Red Hook. So it is gonna be up to our town representatives to address this. And I believe if we can expect that that road's gonna be closed all winter. So that's, that's what I know. And if, I'm glad you brought up, it's probably a good, good time for me to check back in with the town and see if they have any other better updates on that. So any other comments? See you at Winterfest?
See you at Winterfest. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, all right. So, well, that's a perfect closing. You know, we've had, we've had a good year here in Tivoli. We've done a lot of hard work. And I know that I'm grateful to serve with, with everyone here on the board and our office staff. And particularly to serve these residents who've been so engaging with all this water and sewer work. It really has been a community process, a community decision, and a community effort. So and we have much to be grateful for, for that and these grant awards. So with that, I just wanna say to everyone, happy Thanksgiving, safe holidays, and we'll see you on December 19th. Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
7:45. Thank you very much.